Call to order for the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. If I could get a roll call, please.
Diane Johnson.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Chad Johnson.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Knobach.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
And Montgomery.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Lisa.
Second.
Second from Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Nobody signed up for public input, so we will skip number five tonight, go straight to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending March 12th, 2025. Item B, meeting minutes for March 3rd, 2025, City Council work session. Item C, meeting minutes for March 4th, 2025, City Council work session. Item D, meeting minutes for the March 4th, 2025, City Council meeting. Item E, approve the gambling permit for Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association. Item F, Resolution 2806, accepting a monetary donation of $780 from Steve Nordin. Item G, approve the sign replacement at Hannah's Bend Park. Item H, Resolution 2807, approving a conditional use permit for Magnolia Animal Hospital. Item I, Resolution 2808, vacating a portion of the platted Stoughton Street. Item J, approve final pay request for Third Street Water Main Connections. Item K, approve amendment to the escrow agreement with Tract. And item L, approve professional services agreement with WHKS. Are there any items that the council would like to pull down? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Moved.
Motion from Diane, second from Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That carries. Gets us to council business tonight. Item A, 2025, Street Overlay Project. John, if you'd like to take this one.
Thank you, Council President. We engaged with WHKS to put together quotes for Street Overlay Project for this year. We had funds budgeted for this project and we anticipated that the engineering estimate was about $170,000, so it didn't meet the competitive bidding requirements at the state level and actually had, I think, four quotes come in and I'll let Bill kind of speak to the quotes and how they stood.
Thanks, John. So, as John mentioned, we received four quotes. The low quote was from Asliksen Services. Their quote was the amount of $138,000, 130 hours and 51 cents. So just to make sure everybody, we have a map in there, but it's Cannon Industrial Boulevard and the alley at John Birch Park. So that's what we're recommending to do. Asliksen's has worked in town before. They did the pool project, would be two years ago. We did have one problem. If you guys remember, they had a, well, I'm sorry, the council members that were here, they had a dump truck that they left in the air and they drove down the road and took out a power line, but they did repair it. So other than that, you know, we are required to award to the low quota unless there's a specific reason not. So with that, we are recommending the council award the contract to Asliksen Services and the amount I mentioned previously.
Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the 2025 Street Overlay Project.
Moved.
Did you have a question or motion? Okay. So, motion from Ryan, second from Lisa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That carries. Gets us to item B, the ordinance amendment for the fairgrounds. John, if you want to take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so the memo that before you and the action that we're requesting tonight comes after the mayor and council member Jepson and I met with Ferlin Miller, President of the Fair Board, and two other Fair Board members earlier this month. As you know, going back to 2024, the fair had a racetrack constructed, operated. The city had not permitted and informed them that those actions weren't allowed. The, come December timeframe, there was a planning commission meeting that an ordinance amendment was brought forward to the planning commission, but it was denied. And then the council at the subsequent next meeting actually confirmed that through resolution to deny the ordinance. Following that action, staff was kind of left without further direction. So the stance at the time is that the portions of the fairground are zoned R2. There were activities within that zoning district that aren't allowed, which included racing, as well as storage of campers and, or storage of RVs and then camping onsite. So those are things that we brought up in the discussion. We did get more clarification on the camping side of it, that those are for permitted events only, which is, in certain ways, are allowable by state statute, but still remains with the R2 zoning. Racing wouldn't be permitted and RV storage wouldn't be permitted. So, under that conversation, we met and it was decided that moving forward, we would look to discuss an ordinance amendment if it did not include, if it also allowed for banning or preventing racing through motorized racing on the racetrack from taking place at the fairgrounds. Demolition derbies, you know, other things that have happened that are motorized activities, but not specifically those race events, we would look at continuing those because they have been traditionally or for a long-standing time, activities that have happened at the fairgrounds. So with that, it was agreed upon by the folks in that room that if we can move forward with a request to the council for the zoning amendment, that we may be able to come to, you know, agreement and have the racetrack no longer operating to a certain extent. So the action that we're looking for tonight is authorizing staff and the city attorney to discuss those ordinance amendments, as well as, you know, in part of that conversation, we'd like to make sure that we're in conversations with the Fair Board and their attorney to meet that. You know, the key stipulation here is that no race activities, motorized race activities would be included, allowable uses within the district.
Would they be able to apply for like a permit for a special weekend or something in the future, or like, you know, a one-day event type of thing for something? Maybe go-kart racing or dirt bikes?
That.
All our events?
We did not get into that level of detail on the discussion, but the regular racing activities, you know, all would be.
Back to the fair, the way it was 2020, before 2024?
Yeah.
For 100 years, all the events they normally did?
Yes, essentially, and preserving their ability to do things in the future that they may need to do to evolve and earn revenue to, you know, support their operations that, you know, would fit within the characteristics of the fairgrounds.
If they want to do an activity that's not specifically written down, say they want to run a craft sale, do they have to run it by the city first, or do they, can they just do that?
That could be a part of the conversation. We, you know, it was believed that anything that isn't nuisance or, you know, creating, you know, adverse effects to the city, that, you know, events like that, Lawington have at, host at the fairgrounds, would be good for the city in ways to, you know, draw people in and utilize their space. We did talk about, you know, wanting to be able to preserve that within the ordinance. Specifics regarding the exact details of the ordinance, I don't have at this time. That would be, you know, what we'd, asking for the authorization to start to draft things.
Right. Those are very good questions, but what we have before us tonight is just to give the green light to our city staff and our legal team to work with the Fair Board and their legal team, so that all of these questions that you have will be included in that ordinance.
So it's starting the process of the fair zoning?
Correct.
And those details will be picked out in between?
And this would, you know, I know it was concerns potentially about just zoning the fair kind of on an island and having its own dedicated zone. I do feel, looking at their activities that they have and our existing ordinances, that that probably is the best direction, you know, based on our authority to zone something, I mean, and the use of things that go on at the fair that are vastly different. That was, that was kind of the goal. We want to preserve what they've been able to do, make sure that they can do things that, you know, fit within the character of the fairgrounds moving forward in the future, you know, so long that it didn't include the racetrack and the racing.
Yep. And this would be fairly consistent with, say, other communities that have fairgrounds that they're probably not in R2 zones, because, like you said, the events that are held are not consistent with an R2.
Yes.
So we're trying to make things right, so that moving forward, the fair can continue to hold events, generate revenue, and continue to do the events that sustain the fair and that the community supports.
Correct.
That is not in violation of state laws or noise ordinances or things like that.
Yep. And we did talk about, you know, if there are, you know, things that aren't listed, larger events, maybe potentially, there are some other communities that do have like a large-scale event ordinances that are separate, that that, you know, potentially could be something we'd look at in the future as well, so.
Yep. Any other questions or comments, discussion from the council?
I guess, just one question. If we voted this down, what's, what happens? I mean, I see it as an olive branch. I see it as a good thing. I'm on board with it. I just want that out there. If we said no to it.
I mean, if.
Just to kill it. It doesn't seem like a good option, I guess, in my opinion.
I think if it, if it said no, then our, you know, our letter that we issued in January discussing the conflicts with the ordinance would stand and enforcement would, we would have to sustain that enforcement.
Okay. And what would we be enforcing?
That they cannot do.
Listened stuff that they can't do.
Racing activities, the camping, where, you know, there's still some question, legal questions on that. We do believe that they have some authorizations to do camping based on the permits that they're issued from the state for different events they host. But then the RV storage would, would not be a part of it as well, which is a revenue source for them.
Yeah. What about fair activities?
The fair activities would likely stay based on, you know, probably, they could probably define it as legal non-conforming. We've been doing it forever. You know, so those activities within the specific time in the fair probably authorized, but it would be, it would definitely call into a lot of question.
Yeah.
Because I know there's a lot of activities in the fair that probably don't align with R2, but.
Right.
We know that these specifically were not fair activities, so that's why we wanted to make sure we address them.
And would you say, being in that room, it was your understanding that the fair's on board with no motorized?
I felt that we were all in a solid agreement that this was the direction, that us all were able to work together. They very much wanted to work in a collaborative fashion and not in, not, not in contention. Like, we wanted to work together. We wanted to keep a good, good relationship and positive relationship working between us, the city, and the fair.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Would it be included? I know we gave a, original notice was 30-day, then we gave an extension. Now that we're going to, if it's approved tonight, give our legal teams the green light to work on an ordinance, will there be an extension built in?
I, I guess I, I intended that to be a part of this as well, the action that, that letter would just be deemed.
That's what's standing, that the team are working on it?
Yeah, deemed, deemed not necessary. One, they've, I mean, there has been notice that racing activities have ceased. I mean, that, that is in the public record, so that was one thing we asked for, that, that's there. But then they would be able to sustain the RV storage.
Perfect. So, so we don't need to put an extension? It's just understood, because action is being taken?
Yeah, I believe.
Okay.
That, I believe in the enforcement, that if we're authorized to move forward with the zoning amendment, and that's where we ultimately end up with, I don't think we need to, you know, kick out all the RVs off the fairgrounds until we, you know, before that's concluded.
Perfect.
So, I got, I got one more question, just so I can understand this. Zoning amendment will still follow same procedures, including a public hearing and planning commission approval prior to coming to city council. So is the public hearing separate or part of the planning commission?
I believe that we've historically had them with planning commission, public hearings for zoning amendments. And if it's, if it's required, or requested or wanted, we could certainly do both.
Okay.
It's not, you have your standard practice, but you can have, host another public hearing if you, if the council deems it necessary.
Yep. All right.
Hearing no other questions or discussion, I would seek approval for ordinance amending the fairgrounds.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Chad.
Second.
Second from Laura. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. That passes. Gets us to our reports. Is Maggie here tonight? Maggie? Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple updates here from the chamber. We just rolled out our new Cannon Falls visitor brochures. So we have our Discover Guides that we've had for a long time now. We wanted something a little smaller, quicker, easier for our storefronts and other attractions to be able to give to our visitors when they come to town. So these have been handed out to select businesses. Like I said, it just kind of shows a map of downtown Cannon Falls and then outer Cannon Falls too, so like Ferndale's included in this as well. So look for those at select businesses. Discover Guides will come out within the, they should be in my office within the next week or so, and then we'll get those rolled out. We order over 5,000 of those, and those get shipped to different chambers and visitor bureaus all across Minnesota, and then obviously within our own businesses here in Cannon Falls. Something that I've been working on, the Smith has a Paint the Town grant, so there's a possibility that we could have another mural come up in town. I'm working on details of that to see what we can put together. So hopeful that that all comes or goes the way we hope it will. So more updates on that as we kind of figure that all out. And then just some upcoming events I wanted to put out there. April 19th, St. Ansgar's is going to host an Easter egg hunt. They've done, they did it last year, maybe the year before. They've done a great job of taking that event and kind of making it their own. So it'll be an Easter hunt for the kids. I think it's April 19th at 10:00 a.m., and then the Easter Bunny will be there as well. So that's a community event. Everyone is welcome to attend that. Moving ahead to a couple months after that into the summer, we have June 5th as our summer kickoff. So basically, we're taking Fun Fest, just renaming it. We're going to try to make it a bigger event this year. We're going to do vendors on Fourth Street and then music and food trucks and activities on Mill Street. And then June 23rd is a Chamber Golf Tournament. So I just wanted to put that out there. Everyone is welcome to golf in this. It's our largest fundraiser of the year for the Chamber of Commerce. So that's all I had. Just a quick update. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. The EDA met on March 6th. I'm trying to recall if that was mostly an update on the Hardwood Estates, how things are progressing there. We had discussions of moving into Phase Two and the timeline that that will be, and I wish Laura was here to share the good news, but everybody at the EDA seems to, Hardwood Estates is moving far above anybody's expectations. So the fact that Phase One has been this successful, that we're opening up Phase Two and looking at the possibility of Phase Three and Four maybe happening at the same time with the construction of the park, get all the grading so that all the land that needs to be moved, instead of doing Phase Three and Four separate, maybe that'll get done together. The road that'll shoot out to County Road 24, all those things. So, you know, I think that this kind of, it doesn't necessarily, it just proves how much this housing was needed, that it's being this successful beyond anybody's expectation. So it's a sign of good things to come, I think, for our community. If there's anything you'd like to add, John?
Yeah, no, I was, great, we had Jesse Preston from WHKS, they're presenting the kind of concept of the plat, you know, start that phase to move forward and get that next, next phase all platted. This one is all platted with just single-family homes since that has been the driving market right now.
Mm-hmm.
The current project, all of the single-family homes are under contract. So.
Well, yeah, that's great.
What's it estimated they'll be starting at?
That would.
The housing.
That, for the lots for the second phase?
Yeah.
That will very much be determined based on the cost of the project and, you know, it'll be the, you know, however much that comes in with the bids. Hopefully, it's competitive, really competitive, like the last series. I think, as I've learned, there were 18 bidders on that project, so they got some really competitive rates. So the cost of that came down significantly from potentially what it could have been.
Are the lot estimates, the sizes plan to be smaller than Phase One?
Very similar to, very similar to probably the average, normal-sized lots in Phase One.
No more townhouses?
No townhouse lots developed. 75-foot is pretty common, I think, for the width, lot width.
Yeah, generally, upper, you know, 68 to 75, you know, in that range. Those have been, really what's been asked for from the builders, so.
Yep. And I remember, I don't want to take the words out of Laura's mouth without her being here, but we thought that in Phase One, the townhomes might be one of the drivers, because we'd see who was going, and the fact that they were so cool, it's a good indicator that we've made the right choice moving forward. If that were to change, we still have the ability for Phase Three or Four, but right now, the driver's been single-family homes, and that's really been, been moving faster than anybody expected, so.
Are there any plans to do like multi, like apartment complexes, where it's like six-person ones or anything? So nothing out there, nothing on Timber Ridge?
Nothing, nothing in this plan for Hardwood for multi, multifamily units. I know, I was overhearing something today, that there has been other conversations about finding other multifamily sites for other multifamily projects. I know that that demand is, you know, probably still pretty high, considering how quickly Cannonball Apartments filled.
Yeah, it's also more friendly to seniors as they're moving out of their houses at, you know, apartments, so.
All right. Public Works and Park Board also met on March 6th.
Did a park bench donation from Steve Nordin, Hannah's Bend Park sign replacement, and the warming house project?
Yeah. If you want to just give a quick show.
Yeah, so the CFY A fifth-grade boys basketball team used the ice rink quite a bit over the winter, and so to help out, they volunteered to paint the inside of the warming house under staff direction, I'm sure, giving 11-year-olds a bunch of paint.
Yeah. Oh, they'll do a great job.
Yes, they will. So we're excited for that. I'm working with them to figure that out yet here in the near future.
Yeah. That's great. That's great. I know that that fifth grade, I've got a fifth grader in that group, used the ice rink a lot this year, because conditions, and a compliment to you, they said the ice was perfect. This winter was just, just right for it.
Chuck spent a lot of time out there.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Planning Commission on March 10th.
And we basically, both items before us, my Go-Lay Hospital, CUP, and Stoughton Street vacation.
All right. Awesome. We'll go around the horn. Jed?
We are supposed to get zero to 12 inches of snow tomorrow. Who knows? Earlier, we had blizzard warnings. They've since rescinded that.
Yeah, we're out of that zone now.
It seems like it's kind of trending southward, but there's a good chance we're going to get snow throughout the day tomorrow, depending on, you know, how fast it falls. We'll, we'll take care of it. Most likely, we will be in tomorrow night, or, you know, early in the morning, cleaning everything up.
All right. Bill?
One item, Mayor. So at your next council meeting, you will be receiving an engineering agreement to engage WHKS to assist with your PFAS management. So for our new council members, for the last two years, the city has been working on a, or they've prepared a PFAS management plan, and we've been doing sampling within your sanitary sewer system. So I always have to look this up. So what is PFAS? It's per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances. Okay, so what is that? Those are chemicals that are, think of Teflon, heat-resistant, stain-resistant type items. In the metro area, this was 3M, was having problems with Scotch gard. They were having problems with their drinking water. We do not have problems with our drinking water. We get asked that periodically. We have PFAS in our wastewater, okay? And it's coming from those sorts of things, from carpet, carpet stain, most likely from industries. And we had high levels. So last fall, we applied for a PFAS grant to help do additional testing, also buy a sampler, and also to work with the industries to find chemicals and remove them. So that is what will be in front of you at the next meeting. So just a little heads up on that, and then anytime we get a chance to just spread some news, we have had some information we've put out in the past, here at the council, some handouts, et cetera. So we're going to continue to talk about that for the next foreseeable future.
All right.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill.
I got a question. How do you test for that? Do you just drop it in a sewer in an area, in a certain area, and see, okay, like this area's high and that area's not?
Yes, yeah.
Narrow it down?
Yeah, so, Jed and I can both chime in.
So this last round, we went to, we kind of identified industries that had PFAS or potential for PFAS. So we sampled certain affluent of the different industries. Some of them were more just certain manholes, but we were actually able to sample specifically the affluent of like Gemini and Canon Equipment and whatnot, so to make sure that they weren't discharging any PFAS. And a lot of it, you know, the people that worked there, they really have no idea what's in some of the chemicals they use. And so this is, that grant is a source reduction, so that we can find out where it's coming from, approach these businesses and ask them to remove it, because it's really hard to remove from wastewater.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Nicole, anything with the library?
Everything's going smoothly at the library.
Good.
So I want to give everybody an update about the ILS migration, so that, moving to our new library catalog, that all of the Selco libraries are going through. It's fast approaching, in a month and a half. So our official go-live date is May 1st, and the last day that we'll be able to check anything in on our current system of Horizon is going to be Saturday, April 26th. And then although the library is going to be open Monday through Wednesday, April 28th through 30th, we're not going to have our catalog at all. So we can't check anything in. We're not going to have any delivery for interlibrary loan from any other libraries, but we can check things out on an offline circulation module. So I am asking that everybody who comes into the library between now and May 1st, just kind of get into the habit of having your library card with you, because I know everybody who comes to me when I'm working at the circulation desk gets a race to see if I can pull you up faster than you can pull out your library card. I won't be able to do that that week. None of us will be able to. So if you can have your library card either in hand or on your phone, because we do have the Selco Libraries app, which now has the barcodes in it, please do that, and then we'll be able to check things out to you that week. And then on May 1st, that's our official go-live date, and we're going to open at noon that day. So that morning, we're going to be uploading everything that we've checked out. We're going to, anything that's been checked in, we're going to start trying to get in before people come in and start using the new system. So we expect there are going to be hiccups, but we're already in the testing database and checking all of that out, reporting hiccups that we're discovering. And we're still also doing training. There's going to be a new, they call it a discovery layer, and really what that means is it's, when all of you go to check something out, that's the website that you're going to. Whenever you want to make any requests or look and see what is in the Selco Libraries' catalog, that's the discovery layer. They have all of these weird terms. So we're getting that too, and then we've got our side, which is called the client side. And that's what we're, so we're getting trained on how to do both of them. So it's been kind of hectic for us, but just know that April 28th through 30th, we are going to be open, and you can come in for our library programs and everything. You can check things out. It's just going to be a little bit different. You just have to have your card with you. So yeah, there's that. And then, I don't know if anybody has heard about the executive order about disbanding IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So that, we don't know exactly how it's going to impact our library, but it will. So that, we don't know exactly how it's going to impact our library, but it will. And as an example, Minitex, it's out of University of Minnesota. They get $1.5 million in LSTA money, and that money, and per year, and that money pays for MinLink, which is interlibrary loan between all of the library systems in the state of Minnesota. And it pays for E-Library Minnesota, which is the online databases that all of the students and adults can use for free throughout the state of Minnesota. Those have the potential of going away. And that could really hurt us because I don't know if we would be able to find the money for us to pay for any of that. And then IMLS also pays for E-Rate funding, which covers internet access to 99% of libraries in the country, and ours is one of them. So just letting you know, we don't know exactly how it's going to affect us, but these are some ways it most likely will.
Thanks, Nicole. Chief?
So Jed talked about the weather. I just want to reinforce to people that with the daytime snow plowing, while your street may look like it's been cleaned, they are going to come back to clean everything up curb to curb. And so if we do see snowfall, I would strongly encourage people to not park on the streets. The last thing we want to do is end up towing a whole bunch of cars and having people come out in the morning and be surprised when they can't get to work because their car is not there. So please just get them off the the streets. If you don't have a driveway to put them into, there is parking downtown in the city lots, and I would much rather people use those than end up having to call one of the tow companies to get their car back. So as Public Works and I communicate through the data tomorrow, we have a much better idea of what their plan is going to be, but since it could be anywhere between zero and 12, my recommendation is if there's white stuff on the roadway that looks like snow, it's probably going to get plowed like snow, get your car off the road. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, chief. Sarah? John?
Thank you, mayor. Last week, I was able to attend the EIC board meeting and kind of gave them a little history of myself and kind of update on things going on in the city. Great to participate with a group like that. And then right after, actually came from one to the other, we had the chamber luncheon. That was great. Laura and I kind of co-presented on things happening in the city. And then there's the one thing that was announced, and I spoke a little bit more about it because I have some experience with this in my previous community. There's a D grant called Main Street Vitalization Grant, and their phase three, the last phase of funding is is has been announced, so applications are available for it. I reached out to the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation on that they did receive funding in phase two. Typically, the funding has gone to those organizations to to get distributed. That's how we worked it when I was in Little Falls with the Initiative Foundation. So I I informed them that, you know, we'd potentially be interested. So part of that meeting with the chamber was to see if there's any businesses that potentially could, would want to do that. So let them know, like, if they're interested in pursuing this, that they should contact contact Laura or I, and we can kind of start putting something together. But Smith did say they they may have opportunities from their phase two funding, some leftover dollars, to potentially redistribute within their region. So, you know, we'll see if anything comes of that. That might give us some quicker access to to some resources. But it's a really cool program where it allows for building, business owners to improve their their buildings for a lot of things that may not typically be easily funded by private funders like a bank. So their example is, is anything, if you could pick the building up as if it were a tall, small toy or display, shake the building, anything that doesn't fall out potentially could be funded, you know, stuff that's integral to the building. So plumbing, sewer, electrical, you know, are are stuff that typically don't get funded or, you know, are not easy to private fund because they don't add a lot of value, but it could be something that's funded in this program. So if there's that interest out there, again, please contact us, and we might be able to to put together a proposal. It is a part grant fund, so 30% of the cost of the overall project could be reimbursable as a in a grant. Then one other thing, positive news, we're working on the insurance renewal right now for property and and mobile property liability, as well as the work comp, which we just renewed. The rates on that actually came down a little bit from from what we anticipated in the budget. So kind of a a good year from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. So we're seeing the the positive impacts of that in our in our rate of renewal.
Great. Awesome. Thanks, John. Laura?
I'm good.
Chris?
I'm good.
Ryan? Diane?
Nothing.
Lisa?
Good.
Jed?
Nothing.
All right. I'll be quick. I want to thank, Steve Nardine is in our agenda tonight for donating $780 for the monetary donation for that memorial bench. I also want to recognize him. He's been on the park board for longer than I can remember. It's been at least a decade plus, and so he's still serving on the the park board, Public Works Joint Board. And so we appreciate that donation from from Steve and all of his time that he donates to the city. And then also, I want to thank Bruce Brage, and then Bucky Lindo. This morning, they invited me to speak at the Cannon Falls Breakfast Club. It's a lot of the churches in town, plus the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, just a group of, you know, high school kids, middle school kids that get together. It's a great organization. They get together and they give them, the Lions helped this morning, the pancakes, the the bacon, which I found out is donated from Ryan Pierce at Mill Street. It's just a great community event, and they invite different people to to talk. And it was just great to to see kids outside of the school getting together at an event like that, and that they have such community support. So I want to thank Bruce and and Bucky for that. That's pretty much all I got. So I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Jeff.
Second.
Second from Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.